You around this week?
Is she later?
Oh.
Um, no.
She was gonna, she did a.
About whether or not.
And also.
She's gone.
But.
Oh, yeah.
She had a.
I'll have it on case.
She got her.
Right on that.
I gotta go for him.
So.
One time. I just wanted to.
Oh, you just got back.
Oh, yeah, dining.
That's reasonable.
I think that maybe he should.
He wanted to work last Friday.
Like, I'll be affecting too much.
And it's.
It's kind of.
Obviously.
Send it to you. Yeah, then I say. And if it works great. Or.
Yeah.
The city. Whatever.
Does anybody try to go?
Yeah.
Wednesday.
They're saying. Follow the library board.
No, they're.
They were off. Uh, visitors, we have sign up sheets in front to show that you have. We would like to sign up to public comment is also. So I will start with our band acknowledge. All of the Spokane Public Library will sit on. Good. And open. The four bands are spoken privately. Upper band, second, lower band. One, spoken privately. Have lived character. Then find themselves as much people. Give fair respect to the open. Past seventeen years. We show gratitude to the land, river and people who have been fishing. Putting things gathering. And we learn from one another's story because of the meaning. Here's the. Walk.
We was thinking.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, uh, any, uh, changes to the agenda or shall we consider the? Hearing none, we'll consider it. About them. First agenda item is approval of the live. So we. For them. All right, it's been executed all in favor.
Aye.
You vote? Right here in the number. And the next item is approval of the July twenty twenty three bills and contributions.
Move to approve the July twenty twenty three bills and contributions in the amount of one million, one hundred ninety five thousand, forty two dollars and fifty. Second.
Right, it's been executed all in favor.
Aye.
Close. Hearing none. And now we are on to the financial report.
Thank you. Okay, so for library operations report for July twenty three. Our cash and assets. So after July closed, we had available cash and that. A hundred and seventy one. As a reminder, one day of operating cost. Thirty four thousand two hundred and fifty. So the cash, the cash and investment balance is now seven million, sixty nine thousand, eight hundred forty one. That does include our reserve capital of one fifteen million to net of. For our credit return. Uh, July expenditures total of one million, seventy two thousand, one hundred and fifty two dollars. Of that amount, six hundred and sixty nine thousand, five seventy seven. Our books and materials purchased here in New York. Interfund charges total of forty five thousand, forty. That does include third quarter charges for. Uh, working. We, we also had security guard service. Thirty seven thousand. Uh, and our network cable upgrade. And entry was thirty one thousand, four hundred and thirty seven dollars. Uh, that, that was, um, recorded. With, with a, uh, record in our revenue, which is. We rate.
So about.
Um, and then utilities charges total of twenty eight thousand. So for business afternoon. There was an event that, um, that occurred at one of our, uh, on, on one of our library people or if that had run it. Fortunately, none, none of our staff members were. Uh, that, that, um, vehicle is currently in the shop. Should, um, a forester or a shooter forester. Fender. Um, so we're currently, uh, uh, under way of insurance. On the front, uh, on the front, maybe we're now we need. So we'll be acting right, right now for, for. Paying. Be able to. Uh, utility payment. Depending on what was put back out still. Guide up. Our, how, how. So I'd like to open up. This operation. While. It's a.
Or it's just in repair and so we're celebrating.
Yeah. Uh, we, we do plan. Basically. Turn.
Questions to the board? Are you there for the board? With Penny? You're gonna give us a long update?
I sure am. Um, well, we're gonna start things off today with an amendment to the Hill contract. Um, this amendment was executed in the amount of forty thousand dollars. It, um, does two things for us. It extends the scope of work through twenty twenty four. And will cover the, the additional, uh, work for the Nevada Street Development and the kiosk installations. Um, the amount is under the threshold that we would bring this forward, but because it is an increase to an existing contract of this size, I wanted to bring it forward to your attention. The new contract value is two million, four fifty three, three twenty seven. And I did, I took a look at group four, at what their estimates were for project management, um, when they, when they created our budgets and they estimate three percent. And that's exactly where we are with our eighty million dollars worth of budgets. Um, project budget, so feeling pretty good about that. A reminder also that Hill only bills for the hours that they work. Their invoices look very much like a CPA office or an attorney's office where we know that the, um, hours that were devoted to each of the sites and what level of worker performed that. So totally transparent in what they bill to us. Even though we add this forty thousand dollar and we've done it for Nevada Street Development. Uh, if we wind up, it, it's not uncommon and we have this in the contract, we can shift our, our, uh, contract amounts around. Um, certainly, uh, as you can see in South Hill where we had the, uh, the, um, piping issues. That took a lot more of the work for, um, Hill management than what it did at Indian Trail. So we, we still have a maximum, uh, contract amount, but sometimes they shift between sites. So moving on, I wanted to, um, give you a little snapshot of where we are on the projects. Um, I've got a grid there that's familiar. It was, uh, the, the public works projects as of April twenty twenty three. And at that time, we had forty nine active or forty nine total public works projects with twenty one of those active. Um, at the end of July, we now have fifty three projects. Eighteen are active. Six sent for closure. And we actually bumped up to twenty nine closed projects since the end of April, which is huge. As you have been hearing me talk through the years, it's so painfully slow to get our projects closed. I'm really happy to see that count going the right direction. Moving to the next page. Um, as of the end of July, we had nine open contracts. Four of those contracts are public works. Um, Helveta is one, and that was for the fabrication and installation of the signage, graphics and way findings at all of our branches. That will probably come to the board for closure, um, next month. We tried to get it in here this month, but, um, we were waiting on Labor and Industries. They were the last to issue a release letter and they weren't quite ready yet. Um, Walker Construction, of course, is public works. And both our Meridian, uh, contracts for Indian Trail and South Hill renovations. Now, Walker and the two Meridians will come to you at a little later date. Meridian, probably first, Indian Trail. There's a laundry list of, um, documents and activities that the contractor has to perform, their closeout activities. And there, it's quite extensive, actually. We also, once those are done, we also get a letter from Integris recommending to the board that we, um, grant final acceptance. So I look for Indian Trail to come fairly soon, uh, followed by South Hill and then Walker Construction. Now you'll recognize the other names on here, Group Four, who's our lead architect. Um, Hill, of course, MK Solutions, that's our, um, provider of our automated materials handling and our kiosks. We don't owe much on that contract, just about twenty thousand dollars. That'll close that out, but as you know, they're still active with us, um, with the kiosk, um, installations. Spokane Arts, of course, um, supports us with the public art across all the branches. Moving along, we have eleven non-furniture open purchase orders. I've listed those vendors down below, um, and noted what those are for. The bottom four, which is Camtech, Mountain Dog, two of those, and Five Star Concrete, those are the, the four that were just added since April. Um, and then we have forty two open furniture and shelving purchase orders. Forty of those, um, they're all in some sort of a closing state, meaning that we're waiting on, um, uh, documents to be approved by Labor and Industry. Um, also our release letters from Employment Security, Department of Revenue and LNI. So, um, those are painfully slow, but when we, when we can check those off, it'll be a wonderful thing. Um, and then there's two purchase orders that are, are for book carts. Um. As I, in closing, I just want to say that July was primarily, uh, devoted to transitioning the bond, remaining bond work to Minnie Wong. And Nicole Edwards, Minnie is currently in China, so we, we spent a lot of time together in July. She'll be returning on August twenty eighth, right before I'm wrapped up, but, um, we're committed to some, uh, hard work for a couple of days there. Um, and I, I wanted to say, um, a couple of things here. I wanted to first of all, thank Laura and Mary for, um, the years on the board and the support you gave me on the finance committee. I really appreciate it. Um, and also want to thank Andrew for hiring me ten years ago, nearly ten years ago. And my partner and, and friend Nicole Edwards, whom, uh, I've known equally as, as long because we, we worked jointly for Parks Department and Library. And the wonderful team of library, uh, employees. Thanks to everybody and I'm open for questions. Otherwise, I will bid you farewell.
Penny, half of us are in tears because you're leaving. Thank you so much for your work behind, as well as the operations side for past ten years. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Um, all right, so my husband has a, a glass of champagne for me upstairs. So if you don't have anything for me, I'm signing off and heading upstairs.
Penny, I would just like to say on behalf of the board, thank you very much for your bond and great service, uh, and particularly for guiding us through the bond. It was a, um, a, 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 an effort to make sure that we were keeping track of all of those big funds that we just expended. So thank you very, very much. Thank you, Penny.
Thank you.
Cheers.
All right, Penny. All right. So, um, I was gonna thank Penny for chair's support. I'm gonna to, uh, a, a, the library executive director.
All right, uh, I have submitted a written report. Let's call you out a few highlights. Uh, one, uh, is possible development, uh, with our ventures on the Nevada property. Uh, Paris and I recently met with Pride International. Uh, they, uh, provide a lot of refugee housing. And they have interest in. Doing work. Uh, so right now we are in talks with them about possibly providing that avenue on the Nevada property. Uh, this would still be in conjunction with, uh, the amenities that Harris had outlined back in June. They just might move, uh, their location. Uh, but we're hoping to have a, an answer, whether this moves forward. Coming meets possibly if we were to come forward with something to the board, uh, in September, uh, for consideration. I'm really excited about, uh, the possibility of this project. You think of the amenities that we're offering there, we have greenhouse, we improve the importance of that, uh, for, uh, individuals that are coming in, uh, to be able to have a taste of home. We can grow, uh, some herbs or vegetables that they're not able to get here, uh, as well as share those out within the community. Uh, Thrive does a lot of, of great development. If you have self classes, uh, put that in connection with what we do as a library. And I think we have a possibility of a really powerful, um, and unique, uh, partnership. Uh, so we're trying to work out some of the details of what this might. As we went into that. Uh, for this, um, so we're kind of working out the details of that. We're also working, uh, Drive works with a company called, uh, that does workforce housing. Uh, the lead on that. Um, so a real nonprofit, uh, partner. It's not probably. So lots of details to work out. We'll bring it hopefully to the, for consideration. This is something that's kind of a. We can really, uh, program out that piece of property and, uh, the final development. In that agreement, we would, uh, be wanting to have public access. Totally public access to community space, uh, on the first floor, uh, of the, of the housing. Just. And our other spaces. So that's something that we're looking at. I was able to serve on the community interview. For Spokane Arts, uh, recently, uh, so that was, was fun to be a part of. I've no announcement yet for that. Uh, for our DEI efforts for the month, we watched a documentary called Viral, which explored antisemitism. In. Uh, and we also published a blog post on the problematic nature. You weren't aware, uh, it's very much the male Eurocentric, uh, view of the world. Categories of, of religion, uh, focusing on Christianity, even, you know, two hundred to two ninety and all the other religions in, in. Um, so that's just an example of, for the problematic nature of it. There are library systems in the country. Uh, I used to work for one that did away with you. Uh, and. To older basis and that's something that we. Um, but just sort of looking at the structure that we provide for the community, calling it out, uh, as, as a number. Uh, library kiosks were mostly successful. At Yokes, uh, Fresh Market and Gonzaga's Family Haven. Right now we're awaiting, uh, UL certification, uh, on those machines. So we hope to get that wrapped up. Uh, and then the other piece that we're waiting on is the apartments, uh, for those of the Spokane Arts, creating a, a graphical map. We also are finishing up the work, uh, with Spokane Public Schools. The last two of the middle schools will receive their technology equipment. So that means all the middle schools will be part, in part of the partnership with us. Uh, so that completes this week, I believe, is at current territory. Uh, so nice to see that wrap up. We're recruiting for a lot of positions that were approved, uh, last month by the board. We, uh, are really happy to announce that Denise Newyer is joining us to be our new services, uh, manager. Denise is the recipient of the Lemonade Sneak it Prize for Global Librarians Face Diversity. And she's really done an amazing job of providing a supportive space for you. Me, him. Us to neither. So we're looking forward to their expertise and really, uh, leading a really creative team of individuals, uh, here. Uh, and can't wait to, to see what they bring to the table. Our star spotlight for the month. July, I have. Went to Abdul Hakani. Uh, Abdul showed great teamwork in covering shifts at all of our locations. So just really showing some teamwork in covering, uh, real needs throughout the system. And what a great way to see all of it. Um, I don't know. Looked at it like that, but, uh, we certainly appreciated, uh, his efforts. Uh, we also hired our safety and security. So, uh, Derek Mora will be joining, rejoining. Uh, Derek used to head up security, uh, prior to us closing, uh, the downtown branch for construction. As a wealth of experience, uh, really gets where we're going, uh, with, uh, sort of a big heart, a firm heart or firm hand, uh, with the services. So we're really, uh, excited to bring him into the pool and, uh, have him lead our team. And a couple of last things, we are making two modifications to, uh, central library spaces. One you'll hear about a little bit later from, uh, here Spokane. That first floor meeting room, the studio space that had been largely underutilized in the past year. We're transitioning that to a community resource studio. Will have, uh, different social service, uh, agencies in there that can do a different consultation, uh, with our population. And then the space on the second floor that's on the corner, Lincoln and Maine. It's sort of a, a little nook area, has those big glass windows, has been a bit problematic, uh, as far as lines of sight goes. We've had some. Behavior in the past there. At the same time, we have a unfortunate lack of. Great group states for staff, so we're converting back to. So it, it solves two issues. So that work is currently happening right now. Uh, let's see. These, finally, the city of Spokane are now projecting a twenty million dollar shortfall for. Uh, which was larger than we had thought, uh, back in April. They have, uh, implemented a hiring freeze and were stringent, uh, controls around traveling, purchasing. Obviously, the hiring that we're doing right now in the name of safety and security, uh, and, uh, staff burnout and stress. We're not following that, we're, we're moving ahead with, with, uh, the positions, uh, that were approved last month. Um. I did present to city council, uh, on the need for levy renewal, uh, in twenty twenty four, and they were very supportive. Presentation, uh, very thankful for the work that we're doing and also just very confident, uh, in our ability, uh, in, in what we're doing. So, uh, that was good to hear. They don't have to put anything, but the last, if they can put something on the ballot, it's in. So we'll see. We'll continue to push forward with that. And then, uh, lastly, we, uh, continue to act as cooling centers for the city during our regular business hours. Doesn't, uh, really, uh, impact the operations that much. Uh, mostly it involves, you know, uh, coordinating, uh, water, uh, drop offs with the city as well as approving press releases. Thank you. Um, but, uh, we're happy to be here. Community. Then, just so I don't miss this. Page, uh, we will be installing a Narcan vending machine, uh, at the central library, over in the first floor. Uh, this is funded, uh, by BetterHelp together. Just finishing up all the needed paperwork of insurance and liability and, and on that, uh, but we should expect to see that. Talking points out first that. Uh, first floor by elevated.
Remind me, our. Branch hours are at seven?
Uh, Monday, Thursday, it's nine to seven. Friday, Saturday, it's two five, and Sunday. So it's. There's room, uh, for. People to. Get. During that. But that's, that's what we're doing.
This is more, thank you. A very death way. Making the point. The, the two of you together. Thank you for the.
It was there.
Yeah.
The one for one.
How long is the funding for the vending?
It's a great question. Do you know? Don't know, but we'll get that answered. Um, they, they had a, I think it was at first. Power in necessarily a time period that they went. Supply, uh, the machine, they take care of, you know, changing out and.
That's great.
What's the short line? Getting pretty long.
That temperature.
On. Now we are ready. Oh, let's see, Jake Council, Liz on the court.
Yeah, I think the council's taking off in these two weeks.
Summer break? All right, so now we're on communication.
So the main highlight I wanted to share with you today is that we launched a new internal communication SharePoint site. So most of what I usually share with you is external communication, but internal communication is also under our department's purview. Um, and one of our strategic priorities for this year was to update our internal communication site, which was previously, uh, on WordPress and full of outdated information, pretty clunky to update. Um, and so we opted to move to a SharePoint site, uh, which makes it very easy to update, integrated with all of our Office three sixty five products. So it's really easy to interact with kind of in multiple different ways. Um, and so I worked with a small team from across the organization, Ashley Locke, Laura Rixson, Jamie Lawson, Colin Dour, Skyler and Jesse Danvall to come up with the plan and what kind of information we want to include. And over the last more than six months, we've worked on building the site and, um, moving over and updating outdated information. So, uh, it's been live for about a month now. Feedback has been good, but it's also really flexible. So if things aren't working, we'll be able to update it, change it. So I'm hoping that that makes a big difference in everyone's lives and finding the information they need to do their jobs at their fingertips. Um, skipping ahead to social media, I wanted to point out specifically something about TikTok. We're really seeing more engagement there. We've had it just over six months now, um, and it, it's only six hundred followers, so it's not gigantic, but there's more engagement, there's more fun content there. Uh, we did two, it's a really fun place to use to make timely content. Um, we did a very funny Shark Week reel or Shark Week TikTok and also Barbie's TikTok. Both of them are really popular and very fun. So it's kind of a fun way to. Engage with the, they guys, whatever's happening that weekend and be a little bit more fun, so. Um, and then finally, I'll point out the earned media. We had tons of great coverage about the mayoral forum that we had, uh, in July. KHQ co-hosted this at the library. Shane pulled this together last minute, noticing that there weren't really any other mayoral forums happening in the community prior to the August election. Um, and while the stories weren't about us, it really showed us showcasing Spokane and being the platform for an important conversation. So, um, that's really great coverage. Any questions?
Okay, and now we have. Yes, so yeah, Jason's on vacation again. He hasn't been on vacation since the last meeting. So you can see that we had 234 events in July with 3,730 these. So I'll highlight a few of those. So one of them was Kathy Bocken's Lego build, Lego Masters. They had 185 teams. And this one was kind of a magic combination of high value score and high attendance. And was super popular and just some of the factors that made that value score go up were that they had local experts. The Lego Masters contestants were from historically underrepresented groups. There were clear learning objectives and the kids made something during the event and things like that. Another thing on the adult side that had a high score was Sharma's How to Publish. And that was in partnership with Spokane Arts and had a panel of local authors. So some of the elements that brought that value score up were the local experts, the skill building, collaboration with another organizations. In July, we also had the Benny and June exhibit celebrating the 30th anniversary of the place. A lot of people came by to see that. And I also wanted to mention that Dana has worked really hard to make the Inland Markets collections a welcoming and friendly experience for visitors. You can see they reported that in July Dana had 47 research competitions. And those are competitions that are over 30 minutes. We count the ones that take less than that. In another way. So I think that's really significant to see how much. End of my report and I'm happy to ask.
We're just like. That's also a result of. We had such limited hours that.
Okay, I think we're ready to move on to new business. We have the 2024 budget adoption.
Bye, Dana. So key in fact, the cover page, the first thing I want to go over is just kind of a quick snapshot of the bond. That one's going to be very easy to put forward, of course. If I did for next year. So this really what we, what we will be adopting is. Those will be communicated. So essentially the snapshot that I'm going to carry is what our current straightforward would look like. Currently, for the July post, we have just over one year. First, which is another about one point. Once we get through. Nevada and when it was remaining, we want to spend the possible project, of course, but this is a high level snapshot. Pretty straightforward for bonds. So move on to the operations section. So here's just a quick snapshot of our statement of revenue and expenditure. So this is comparing the 2023 budget to the 2024 post and what that difference is. For purposes of comparison, we do have the. FTE, the FTE that we adopted by, is adjusted in. We are, we are looking at the 101,550. So basically overall, for our, for our expenditures, we're increasing compared to 23 to 24. Our cost by one point, sorry, by 1,309,800. The majority of that is going to include our staffing. So in, in food, our in-house security. We've got an increase in the utilization of our PC remote, like our H staff. Which then align with. There is something that we will be focusing on that's longer than the adopted. Stocking to FTE. Those are locally funded, so we'll get more detail later. If you look at our revenue, non, non tax related costs. So we, we are going to be a lot more. So a lot of that is due to branch work and then our. And then, yeah, so that's really just kind of a highlight there. So for revenue side of things, so for financial resources, our tax related posts. We did estimate the general fund allocation in 3.1% for next year. That is our senior average. There's a. That for the levies, this dollar, a 2.4% increase. Applied to that. Not the absurdity in that. The 2.4% in. And then for the non, non tax related resources, you can see that up here. So some, some things to kind of look at is our, our interest earnings. So we're seeing a higher amount than we have in the prior years. Mostly because of our very healthy fund balance. I mean, your turn and that's the averaging about. Parking and event space. So we did budget 30,000 for the. Event tools for the next year. Some of that will include. Funds for outsourcing staff. So we will bring in. External people to help with postings. Some of the event will alleviate our event. Now merchandise. Forward, I have the working finance team on options for a new free sales system. So they're the things changing. It's really nice to be. We have. Contributions donation, so 80,000 that for, for that, for 2024 budget. Really seeing a large increase in support of the friends. Also the foundation and then for local businesses or. With that outreach. Financial. And then our intergovernmental revenues. So we've got 189,500 for that next year. This is a lot of grant work that we'll be doing. Particularly Karen Newman has done a lot of work. It's part of. Folio, the folio. Our new software folio. There's a lot of. So there, there is just a lot of work. She's also doing work on a digital navigator project, which. Brought my accent to. Our Spokane Public Schools partnership. So we've been currently anticipating about 270,000. Which is great. We do expect to be bringing on high schools to the. That's about it for the. And here's just a snapshot of our expenditure by departments. We do have a change going into next year. You may notice. The few little public services are program services. So now that we're kind of tracking that and looking at what the value is in our program. We see it's much more useful to kind of pull that out. We also did. Absorb the summer beat. Any question on that layout?
What are your intentions between public service and program services?
So the program services are in the, our. Class, that we hold with public services, one of our. Our front, our front base of folks that are, you know, first with public services.
Like operations or programs or with the public service, like specialized, okay.
I probably not the best. When we do for the program service, that doesn't prove setting to.
And then support there specifically like.
So those are definitely, that, that mostly. So they've been trying to.
Purchasing label in.
Yeah. It's, we, we. No, we, we're not operating. Right, moving on. So here is the next page is another snapshot of our expenditure. This one is now by type as opposed to by department. So overall, you can see our, our personnel related. Followed by operating services. So I think the next page, the snapshot of our staffing box. Again, for purposes of comparison. We have, we moved from the FTE in. Basically this group like the, like the FTE, we adopted in July, the majority of that. We get security guard door for, for, so that reduces our security guard. So overall, you see 740,000. Again, that's the public living adjustment for 4.5% for all staff. We are adopting two FTEs. One of those is a folio developer for the community data department. That's about $90,000, 75,000 that we. So. Basically 22,000. And then the other FTE were, were hoping if your library. That person will work in these. That, that position will be. Another item that we've been having. Is a reserve for budget. That is to keep a little placeholder for us for 235 FTE. So similar to what we do. We have that, that property and had. Kind of unknown where we would need to adopt. I mean, the amount of FTEs. One said that that is for. And the other one. Marketing specialists sort of. To be determined. So we don't know if that may be. We might wait for. Right, my question. So another portion of that 740,000. We've got about 20,000 earmarks or digital. That training. If they want to be certified, they would get a. Here are also utilizing more. $30 more for next year. I do want to point out that overall, for our overall staffing. To be. Part in the way of 60% of our staff is in the Republican programs. So first supplies. I did break out. Professional services and contract services here and then everything else. Supplies essentially that increased 51,000 before. It is a lot of the munitions. Still these chemicals and then. Which is more of a using. For the professional services. So we do have an increase here for our community technology department. For an external digital navigator training. So it's about 50,000. Very interesting. We're just in the very, very. Another increase for the professional services. Is the vet stats that, that third party. Fully, totally funded by. So for contract services, about 102,500 is an increase next year there. So where, where that increase lies, the majority of it. Is we bought 90,000 earmarks for a folio. So this person would work alongside the new mayor that we have. But you know, what would be extended in the back. I'll do that, that. Also 38,500 is another. And in administration, we did review the consulting services. And then for other services, so that's a decrease of 51,000 compared to. So a lot of this is within our. I think our IT data service. So we wouldn't do. Hot sharing. We need to fund charges. So this one's really not static timing. Everything is essentially a 3% increase typically what we feared be year over year. You will notice the centralized change. However, it's because the, the way that they calculate that is based on capital budgets that they would get upon budget for prior years. So now that was the net tax. So generally what we get for. Is they provide with, they provide us. Payroll and the vendor. That we purchase our fuels, all of our vehicles to them. I think the, the mice. Is our banking services. And then also our enterprise technologies, a lot of the. That, that we use. So like about it for that one. Onto the capital. So just some of the different changes here compared to from 23 to 24. Building improvements, just kind of bringing that down to where we're actually. A lot there. Damage. So I think the big one here is our library books materials class. So going up to about one, to 1.5 million. Really what that is, is catching up bond spending. So since. 2021, so true. Bonds were spending significantly amount of dollars on our books and materials. So we really didn't have to increase our. We also had kind of the. Of what that looks like. So we're just, just. It's so, it's also about digital. Doing new products, audio books. And then for machinery and equipment, about 150,000 budget for next year. Um, and then for machinery and equipment, about a hundred and fifty thousand budgeted for next year. Designs are paid, which should be the phone system is running underway. What that need actually is. What we do when we step there. And that's sort of a. And feel it way that maybe. We can be three thousand dollars. Focus on. What are the essential. And then for vehicles, again, so we just plan on purchasing two vehicles. So the following pages are just going to be. Uh, we, this is the same. Compared essentially, but in the format of what our. Pictures look like. This is all for the format that was presented. That they had your nine minutes here. And. All right, great. But just want to. Being with us. You want to, uh, take forward. Find the page. The blue bubbles. Is the landscape page. So that's just a snapshot of our. It's our organizational part. So again, this will be public services, program services. It's a little different from last year. I always related. Those some staff. So moving on to the next page, it's really. Summary for this part of my. Question, it's the same format. We look at. Uh, we we really look everybody. Again, so we just are are trying to find our budget. Now that we've gone through it. Comes through everything with net. Net deficit of seven hundred and fourteen thousand nine hundred and forty four dollars. That's what we'll be spending down. Or or undead. Really supportive. It just shows that we're being. Really asking for a lot. Far as the assumptions really just. Summary of everything. Very, very high level. Like wanting to kind of operate in a day. Put our fund out. So. Provided budget goes. Exactly how we. Sixty eight. Trying to put it by the end of next year. That being about hundred fifty eight. Operating days. Yeah, and then twenty twenty five, hundred thirty one, so on. Really dwindles down by. Twenty twenty six will be a very important year then. Bring it to. Final, um, agenda item. But again, I just want to. Glad to. Everybody doing this. I hope that you are done. We also don't hesitate. We kind of just wanted to. Yeah, we we're asking, you know, for an increase of one point three million. So our. Financial. We are, however, going to see more in. Over christianize that a little bit. So, and, um, this this week, Andrew and I are. Office. Over this. So our our goal is really to. Go in there confidently. That we have. Or. Walked in. Compared and. But the the really, the the conversation is going to be. But I know. I just, what what we believe is it iterates that. For our main. But our the path confusion. Books, book materials. Really, the people. But what, when I think it's more impactful. Eighty four. Thirty. First of all. Maybe. They just kind of like. It it feels like we just had a confrontation. It's so unfortunate. We've been reacting differently.
We need, we want to keep our doors up. Same level as we currently operate and offer this. Opportunities for the public. In a safe way. Clean way.
So this is budget. I just. Kind of. How it's been. Really, really. Feel like. Fair, fair. There are some strategies that. Really need to. For shortfall. So in general. I think we're in good position. But when it comes down to really. Their. Whatever they think of. Once I should know what. Or issue.
Thank you for going through this and putting it ahead of time. And I, I think that. The transparency, like both that as a board member, but also as like. Community member. The the responsibility that. We all as. Budget and the way that you are, the way that you are staffing and the way that you're. Not only taking care of the community, but you're also taking care of your team from the beginning. You know, like you're really thinking about how is it that we can. Maintain in a sustainable way. Uh, I think that's reflective in the budget and in. Thank you.
It's going to be. Yeah, for many reasons, but you know, to be fully operational. Seven branches. Yeah. I'm looking on. Data. Part of all of that. That people have to be for.
And then you guys do show innovation in the way that you're partnering and the way that those partnerships also take across to programs. So I think there's, yeah. Anyone.
So the things that the city is asking. Best in. Look at. Technology.
We did that, thank you.
And, you know, and we we do minimal staff. So I I feel like. We're ahead of the curve. With a lot of this. And.
Sorry. Their their operation. Conversation.
So this, the council is looking to adapt their budget. That were. That's a big air of position post election. She's like last. There might be some work that we need to do. Get some of this through, and I think a lot of that's going to hinge on. What we hear on Thursday's conference session. I'll remind the board to stand. Right now, we go forward. And package our budget proposal. Along with the mayor's. However, our CW does say this. Library or trustees takes the recommendation. So that is an option. Have. You're going to. At a level of service that.
Thursday's meeting. There.
City.
And. Yeah, so you're saying. But put it back with that.
Our our voice is not. Related.
Well, as we discussed. Hermit. Ask.
We like looking at this, this is not when you break it down to like what FTEs are responsible for and they each have. A span of work they're in.
All right, any other questions? Boy. Okay. Wait. For. Food. So. Our favor. Hi. Suppose. I fear none, the budget is.
We could make our job. We're. Wait, let's go.
Now we have, uh, Samantha is going to talk us about the library.
Hi. Um, so as you know, we have our annual employee meeting. Here are staff day. Uh, generally, that's just been a half day closure, and this year we're at. A full day. Uh, it's on Wednesday, October eighteenth from nine AM.
Questions about staff day. Three quarters of the library. All in favor. Very good. Uh, and now we have a presentation.
Yes. That's all.
Comments when you want. Patience.
All right. So as you can see, I'm not Bataya Streeter. Today is Bataya Streeter's birthday. And I forbade her from coming to this meeting and I'm standing in order instead. So forgive me as I stumble through it. I have no problem. Next slide. Um. Yep. Yeah, so what we're going to talk about today is a little bit of an introduction to Pierce Spokane and how they're going to be working in our libraries with us. An introduction of our new community resource studio that Andrew mentioned earlier. And an idea of the vision of where we're trying to go with social services at SBL. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Justin Harmon with Pierce Spokane. And he will tell you about here.
If it's ours. Great. Okay, so yeah, uh, I. As the person, I'm Justin. Uh, my other partner with the library is Kayla. Um, we've been down at the library now for. Uh, seven and a half. It's been a. Very interesting, so far, I'd like so, a lot busier than my. Um, but yes, we're both always lived experience. Uh, when I talk about my lived experience, personally, of course, in long term recovery. Um, I have about half years substance free now. I also have some health. Visionally recovering from. As well as, um. It's like I said, that I substance use, I also have experience. Okay, so I want to give you a little bit of background information about Peer Washington, because I think that right there really does encompass what our peer model is and how it was built. Uh, Peer Washington originally started out as Seattle AIDS support. So this was back in nineteen. Uh, right in the age of the AIDS crisis and. You know, the the LGBT community on the hill, Capitol Hill was screaming. And, you know, people, you know, coming down with this illness and. Not knowing exactly where to look for support, uh, especially the stigma surrounding that they had, they chose to. Um, you know, support each other. And originally started out specifically as support groups and then as, um. You know, medications became more available and that kind of stuff, they started looking at where some of the underlying causes such as substance. They started to expand their services. So, um, now we have kind of what it looks like today. Um, it is, uh, there's one on one peer counseling that we do, we do, um, you know, still do the support group model that we have. Um, as well as, um. You know, supported housing, supported employment. Uh, and the thing is, is this organization literally from the inception has been people with lived experience. Uh, lived experience pervades this organization, uh, right up to the Peer Washington Board. Um, Peer Spokane is the second place that they opened. So I mean, after a few new changes, you have Pure Seattle. In twenty nineteen, we had the Pure Spokane open, and now there's also Peer Kent. Peer Olympia, we, uh, also have some other organizations, uh, such as Peer Workforce Development, which trains. Uh, we also have the Office of Behavioral Health at the Center of Peer Washington, and that is what the former Behavioral Health Office, but. Um, so yeah, we're currently doing that as well. Um, so, uh, peer counselors, peer services, support specialists. The training that we, okay, so we don't just kind of get from the. Um, there is some definitely training that we do, one of which is the state certification. Um, state certification historically has been based a little bit more on mental health. Um, it's called Certified Peer Counselor, and it's about a week long training that we go through. And, um. All of our staff go through that training. Now, um, we have a lot of volunteer staff too, so like peer coaches and whatnot. Um, the training that they receive is nationally accredited, it's, um, the Connecticut Addiction for Center and Connecticut. Center for Addiction and Recovery. Uh, C cars, what we call it, and that's what our coaches go through, it's another week long training that focuses a little bit more on substance. So kind of go across the board there, as well as having stuff, uh, trained in like crisis interventions who have just like a suicide. Adventure training recently. Um, and then we also do a lot of how to interact with people such as like motivational interviewing skills, that stuff. Um. Yeah, like I said, kind of, we all have lived experience. Um, lived experiences in all of our services and really our coaching model is kind of how we do all of our one on one services. Only difference is, is that it's a specific topic, so it's housing. Um, we also do respect multiple pathways to recovery, a lot of our folks are dedicated assistive treatment, you know, most of that might not be best thing. Um, so, you know, we have groups that are signed specifically around that. And then some people, you know, uh, maybe their journey is more about like mental, mental health and, uh, chronic illness, so. Um, you know, recovery is defined by the individuals, not for us to see how it's going to. So I think that really, too, when you start working with people, that building rapport and taking the time to listen. Is probably the most important part of what we do, and that's really what kind of, I I personally take that first month that we had in the library was really about, it was sitting there, it was getting to know the folks, really getting to listen to them. Um, so some of the other places peers work, uh, right now, actually, a lot of, um, in the mental health field, peers are really filling the gaps right now. Um, and especially in, uh, you know, treatment centers. They actually, we have peers now in the hospitals. And that, uh, kind of what we do in places in the campus is the libraries. So, uh, value appears for one. Unique understanding with lived experience, so right there, really, everything's built on that. Um, somebody comes in and they sit, they sit down, meaning they're having a bad day, gets caught with stuff their own way. Know what that feels like. You know, and saying, hey, I get it, you know. Is really, you know, to have somebody genuinely genuinely say that to you. Is really powerful, especially when you feel the world's kind of hostile. You know. Um, which a lot of folks, but a lot of folks, it is, I mean, that's just kind of. Um, but the other thing with lived experience to show is I've had to ask for help. Uh, I know what it's like now to use the system, you know, especially systems that are broken and disconnected. Um, you know, and so having somebody who already has that knowledge and is able to go in and actually, you know, say, oh, it uses the steps. No, it's okay, you know, I've been. Got a plan. Uh, is really helpful. With that. The other thing we do is model effective recovery is possible. Um. And then, um. and then um, also advocating on behalf of all populations. As I said, we have that office, we have our health advocate. It's not just that office that does that. We do that on the daily with folks, um, especially when, you know, they are starting to butt head with service writers, something like that. A lot of what we can do is go in there and help mediate the situation. And you know, hopefully, uh, you know, mend some, mend some bridges. So, um, the other thing we're doing right now is we're keeping statistics, uh, for informing new strategies. And I think the next couple of slides are going to explain exactly what that is a little bit better. Um, well, for so I guess we, I'm going to go ahead and start and tell about a couple of successes that we've had so far. Um, one of the things that we first started doing, we got there was learn how to access the storage or in the access point for the storage protection program. That's where folks can go and store their stuff for the day they need to. Um, and that right there really is part of that building rapport. And it, uh, there was one gentleman that came in, first time that I talked with him, he was putting this stuff in there. He was like, I want nothing to do with nobody. Like I, you know, you're like, really? I just, I just want to store my stuff and I want to be done. Second time he made it really clear, didn't want to talk to anybody. Third time. He's like, well, you know, I think sit down and have a conversation. And so through that, we've been able to actually, you know, get him a social security card, get him access to, um, you know, a housing provider that he's hopefully going to start working with. And then I think Kayla's also working with him on getting some venture places, you know, so the health aspect there as well. Um, another girl came in and she had not been in any of the shelters in Spokane and, um, just was kind of refusing to go to them. So we started looking at some options, um, that might be good for her. And um, after a few weeks of work, now she's actually staying in the shelter. She's fantastic. She's working towards permanent housing and employment, you know? Um, Kayla just sent me a a success story today of, uh, there's a, she's 18. She's been coming to the library now for a couple of years and has been, um, you know, unhoused for that. And um, you know, she really wanted to get involved with the meat leaf program. So Batia had been working with me before and actually going through talking with transitions, you know, when we get her housing help as well as working towards, um, you know, some employment skills and Kayla's helping her out with the social security. That really, I think illustrates kind of what we're going for, I believe, uh, with this, with this room is it's, it's a team effort. Um, as we come in, we're starting to look, bringing in some more providers. Um, I think, are you going to talk more about that or should I just keep it going? So, um, yeah, I mean, uh, right now we've got Providence is coming in on Fridays. There's public youth agency, you know, Wednesday is um, I think we've got some stuff going on with frontier behavioral health. Another behavior, uh, so I don't know if anybody knows, so it's heard of recovery cafe, but they recently got their behavioral health license. They're going to be coming in and talking with us next week. They're really excited about doing something with that. Um, then also we've had a, we've talked a little bit with Revival Reentry, uh, PGM. Meeting port of course is also there. And I know that they've started to do some like a little bit more intensive case management with people. And um, that's another, uh, thing that we've been utilizing space for. Um, so just a little bit about kind of what we've done. Uh, Peer Washington actually started doing the library stuff in town in January, 2022. So they hired three full-time positions and the libraries are in Kent, um, Hurian and Federal Way. Uh, so over the, uh, last year period, it was about a hundred and or 1,500 or so, uh, interactions, which works out to about 131 per month. The first month in the library alone, we didn't mind me, but that was three libraries. And in this library alone, the first month we had around 180 interactions. So there's 160 on there, but the panel was just a little off when we actually did the presentation. Um, and so far this month, we've also had another hundred interactions with patrons. I think, um, we've met with 42 unique individuals and, um, I actually think I'm doing the next slide right now. Going to think about, yeah, we've actually distributed over a thousand. Um, so you know, you look at, and that's a partnership with Pete Spokane. And then we also do a little bit with, um, our place as well as some sandwiches of the goods. Um, the top pieces have been, they have been identified and I've seen this as I'm talking with people specifically housing always. Um, mental health and substance use definitely close second on that one. And then employment and food and spirit, we saw a lot of people are actually getting introduced to us. I think by actually having something tangible for them to, um, get when they come and talk to us has really been great for building rapport with folks. I think, yeah, kind of a, some of the partnerships again that we did, yeah, we talked chats the other day as well. Um,
Yeah. Yeah. So the, uh, one of the really important things to think about with our community resource studio that we're moving on the first board is that Justin and the peer team form the backbone of it. The idea is that whenever somebody needs help, they can go to this room and find people that can help them navigate the way. But then the other important part is getting direct assistance. The vast majority of services right now, um, are referral based. So you can go to a community resource fair or something like that. And they'll refer you to the track center across town or the, you know, food bank over here. But what Justin is doing is helping to connect them to resource providers directly. So he's walking along with them to make sure that they connect with medical, to make sure that they get their social security card. And it's a fundamental difference in, uh, service provision that we have not seen in the city. And we're hoping that we can use it to tap into some of the resources that are going to appear in the future.
All of that. So just briefly, I want to talk about long-term vision. This is kind of our, we have a green slide because Bataya and I talk all the time. She's been here about a year and a couple of months. And the, the changes that have occurred brought us ahead of the curves that ruin like that line. Because we are well in advanced creating programs that can be helped. The one thing that we've come upon as a group is intentional growth. I mean, you could not believe how many people have asked us to partner with us. And the fact is, is that we'd like to choose the best partners that are the most effective. It's really emerging that way. Second is this new city county cooperation that's coming about, you know, the regional cooperation, which is still in formation. We are going to be really centering, we're, we're almost a leader in our small world of finding housing. And we've had, I think, 17 to 18 successes since we started last year of placing people very difficult cases often. So we want to be a living example of what we call compassionate action. We're, as a group, we're kind of tired of talk. We like to actually get stuff done. And that's something that, uh, we're planning to do. And, uh, we have folks that really want to come and intern with us, especially Eastern. So we want to be a laboratory to train and foster new staff. Uh, my wife's a nurse. She had to go through this training a long time ago. So we plan to expand into healthcare and maybe psychological services, those kinds of areas as well. And we want to really present as a group, a new model for the way that we provide community care. Compassionate and safe and well organized. So that's our mission, vision and future. Next slide, please. Thank you.
By the backbone. Right. Any other questions?
I have a, you guys are usually very relaxed about I was wondering if there are talking points around this. I had somebody say to me the other day, oh, I don't think that the library should, like that's outside the bounds of the library. And I was sort of baffled, like, oh, it's an interesting concept. Um, and, and what's, what is that system response that you guys have to a library is this and and just serves the food?
Yeah. And then I think it's, people have different information.
For sure.
And, and that's what it is.
Yeah.
You know, it's not just a book off the shelf. It's how can I connect you to the
First, yeah. Yeah.
And that's, that's our standard. If that's, if, if the action that we're doing, the program that we're delivering, doing that.
Yeah. And, and I, I was, I was more wondering like, do you guys have that point like, well, like as, as things grow and progress and I think that impact will, will keep values for it. And I also think that having a proactive narrative. Um, and really
You have time.
Josh Boyd said that I get you.
Yeah.
We just recently posted a blog about the social services, um, on the website as well, um, today. And so if you want to look at that, there might be something that, um, that, that Jen, in general, has kind of this talking points that we're talking about. And that's kind of more of the public version of that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
If you're in the range, or is there
Uh, no, somebody comes in and they're saying, hey, I need help with something. We're going to try and get that protected. Yeah. So I mean, at our, at our actual site at Pierce Spokane, we only do adults and, uh, you know, 18 and older. Um, but at the library, the population is a little bit different. And so the only differences between the two is, is that if somebody who's under the age of 18 is the transportation to a place, again, other than that.
Well, thank you very much. Thanks. Uh, are there any additional items? All right. And anything to sign up for public talk?
With the back there, I'll check on mine.
And here. Uh, our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, September 19th, 2023. Have a full year at library. And we don't need to set your section of time. So with that, uh, we will be real meeting. Thank you, everybody. You.